Good evening. I call this six, this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council Meeting of February 8th at 6 o'clock to order. I presume I can be heard. Can people hear me? Great. Councilman Seconder, if you can lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
At this meeting, help us to make decisions with keep, which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're going to do, we're going to swear in a new police officer. Is Chief down? Gotcha. Okay. Chief, are you going to provide us a little introduction?
I am. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council for this opportunity to introduce one of our newest officers, Guy St. Hill. We're excited to have Guy here. He was a police officer with the City of Atlanta Police Department from 2013 until 2020. And prior to that, he spent two years in the US Army, serving our country. And before joining the Atlanta Police Department, he held various positions in security, retail, and education. Guy received his Associate's Degree in Business Administration from Miami-Dade Community College, and he received his Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration and his Master's Degree in Social Services Public Administration, both from Florida A&amp;M University. And we're happy to have Guy on our team and look, and he looks forward to serving the community of Dunwoody.
Okay, so I'm going to read a sentence or so at a time, and if you'll just repeat after me. Does that work? Can y'all hear me, Chief? Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. On my honor, I state your name.
I.
I'm sorry. You're going to repeat after me. So, sorry, this is hard. I understand. On my honor, I.
On my honor, I.
Guy.
Guy St. Hill.
Okay, do solemnly swear and affirm that.
Solemnly swear and affirm that.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Georgia.
The Constitution of the State of Georgia.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Dunwoody, Georgia.
And the Charter and orders, ordinances of the City of Dunwoody, Georgia.
I am not the holder.
I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted for.
Of any unaccounted for.
Public money due to this state.
Public money due to the state.
Or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
Or any other subdivision or any authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office of trust.
I am not the holder of any office of trust.
Under the Government of the United States.
Under the Government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state which I am.
Or any foreign state which I am.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
Prohibited from holding.
Prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified to hold.
I am otherwise qualified to hold.
The Office of a Peace Officer.
The Office of a Peace Officer.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the State of Georgia.
And laws of the State of Georgia.
I will faithfully follow the legal rules.
I will faithfully follow the legal rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
Of the Dunwoody Police Department.
Of the Dunwoody Police Department.
And the City of Dunwoody, Georgia.
And the City of Dunwoody, Georgia.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'm going to ask Council to unmute themselves so we can give him the round of applause we would have given him if we were in person. So if everyone can unmute themselves for just a minute and clap.
Congratulations. Hoo-ah!
Right. So, welcome to Dunwoody, sir. We have a great community and we value our police. And, and we are so grateful that you have chosen to serve here, and we all look forward to meeting you in person one day. But welcome and thank you for choosing us.
Thank you, and I'm grateful for being here, and I look forward to meeting you guys as well.
Yes. Have a great evening and stay safe. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We really appreciate it.
Y'all have a good evening. Everybody mute back up. We are on to presentations and reports. Ann Hanlon and Johann Weber are going to present from the Central Perimeter. I had a chance to see this presentation, and I think it's really interesting. Ann, are you ready? Do we have to do something?
Mayor.
Hi.
I apologize. We have public comment as well.
Oh, we do have public comment. That's on me. Thank you. I totally skipped it. I was looking ahead on the agenda. The, so yes, public comment. I'm sorry. Thank you for catching. Ginger?
If anyone would like to speak and public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised at this time.
All right. Thank you. Sorry about that. But now, I'm not 100% sure how this next presentation happens. Ginger, do you know? Or Ann, are you ready to go?
Yes, Mayor. I'm here, ready to go.
Hi. Okay.
Hi.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm actually going to introduce my colleague Johann Weber. So of course, my name is Ann Hanlon. I'm with the Perimeter CID. Through the CID, we've run a program called Perimeter Connects in which we provide outreach to all the businesses in the perimeter market. And since the pandemic started last March, we have, we've done countless surveys and touchpoints, and we've really tried to kind of keep our finger on the pulse of what's happening with all the businesses, the large corporations and the smaller tenants in the perimeter market. So I mentioned to Mayor Deutsch that we will be willing to give you all an update on what we're hearing with regard to when people plan to return to work, kind of what the current situation is at all those companies. So I'm going to introduce Johann Weber. He runs our Perimeter Connects program. And Johann, I'm going to let you take it away. I see you've got your PowerPoint up on the screen.
Yeah, thanks, Ann, and thank you, Council, and members of the public for the, the chance to share a little bit. I'll try to keep this pretty focused, but as Ann mentioned, we wanted to try to assess at the beginning of the year kind of where things were in the market, as well as what the, the sort of projections and future might hold for us as we think about some time potentially returning to an office, as well as might, what the sort of practices around work might look like in the sort of future of work after that point. First thing, I just wanted to share a little bit of some of the, the data that we have on the sort of mobility side of things. So the first one is, isn't focused on actual traffic volumes in terms of automobiles, just to give us a sense of kind of what is going on in the market. The major thing here, this is Ashford Dunwoody at Ravinia in front of Perimeter Mall, just one specific, very reliable counter. So the major thing that we noticed, not surprising anybody, was that we had a big drop in local volumes in April with the stay-at-home orders. But we saw a lot of that actually recover by the time we came around to November. November has a little bit more volume historically than February, and, but we've seen that kind of dip back down again by the time we came around to this month. And we see that same thing matched in GDOT's major arterial counters. They sort of have a profile of counters that they use across the region. And this chart just shows you the sort of percentage compared to the year prior. And so you can see about a 40% reduction when we were starting in March and a sort of steady return with actually some above-normal numbers in September, October, and December. And now a slight decline again in January and February. So just to sort of give you a sense of what traffic volumes are looking like. So depending on how you feel about that, that may be good or bad news, but that's the, the sort of situation on the roads. It's a little bit different on the transit side. So this is heavy rail ridership for, for MARTA. So looking at our three stations here in the, the Perimeter District, Dunwoody Medical Center and Sandy Springs. And we saw obviously the same major decline, but we've seen a pretty modest recovery at all. And Dunwoody with a little bit of recovery as things opened up slightly on the retail side. And, but we're still seeing on average that our, our rail ridership is about 80% below normal, which is actually lower than the average for the MARTA system, particularly at the rail stations. So we're seeing lower numbers than, than the overall system, and a lot of that is going to be tied to the office occupancies. So we wanted to understand the situation for that. And obviously, employers are, you know, these folks are really, really busy, asking them to take a lot of time to talk about what they're doing. It's challenging. So we're really grateful that of the 120 employers that we reached out to for updates in January, we actually got 33 responding, and a large proportion of the, the largest employers particularly, and the ones we maintain very active relationships with. So this data that you'll see following represents about 24,000 employees, and that does span Dunwoody and Sandy Springs, but within this Perimeter District. And the major things, just to sort of like, you know, the, the teaser for the rest of it is that we saw across all of those about 4.3% of employees on site and a slightly higher percentage on site amongst smaller employers. So we'll break that down a little bit more. We saw about 16% had few, 1% or fewer of people on site in their sort of assessed presence. We saw actually a pretty small amount, about 44% that reported that they had 5% or fewer people on site, and about 12% that reported more than 25% of people on site. So not a lot with that high percentage of occupancy. And those are generally going to be ones reflected in the next slide as people who've, as employers that have returned substantially to their offices. And we also reached out to property managers, and property managers kind of gave us an estimate of what they thought their occupancies were. And when we combined that and modified it based on how large their properties were, we ended up with something like an average property occupancy of around 13%. So all of this is coming together to reinforce that, a, a pretty confident estimate of somewhere between 10 and 15% office occupancy in the market right now. So the next question is, do they have any planned return dates? We did see that a portion had planned return dates for March and April. About 26% had either returned or had plans to return by the end of April. But importantly, many of these were very, very tentative. Ones that had March and April dates specifically told us that they were in the process of reevaluating those and did not know whether those would change or what they would change to. And then we saw a large chunk that had specified June, and then some others that were sort of spread out across July, August, and September. But importantly and interestingly, the biggest chunk, we had, a majority of employers actually told us that they simply had no return date planned. And some felt that they simply, in the face of uncertainty, could not commit to any date. Some had, had set dates in the past and had continued to bump them and were simply no longer setting return dates. Some were evaluating as frequently as every week. So a, a host of different kind of detailed approaches to it, but a majority that simply aren't sure. Then our last major question for employers was their future plans. So are they planning to work from home and work remotely more often in the sort of, you know, future post-pandemic, whenever that is? And we saw that about two-thirds said that they expected there would be more remote work post-pandemic than there was pre-pandemic, but that about 45% didn't have any defined program or frequency in mind. They simply expected that there probably would be more. There'd not been any sort of formal decisions or conversations made. About 15% did expect a, a specific part-time future work from a home program that they had been having some conversation about. We saw about one in three were simply fully undecided. There, there was no sense what that future would look like. And then we had one employer that did shift fully to remote work. But very interestingly, they had actually already had that plan in place pre-pandemic. They had expected to sort of make that evolution over time, and this sort of just forced the issue quickly for them. We did not hear back from any employers that had, had any sort of plan to substantially downsize their space or shift to a substantial portion of fully remote work that did not already have plans to do so. And the one employer that we heard from amongst the large ones that had the most ambitious plans in terms of the prevalence of remote work in their future, also told us that they did not have any plans to modify their overall space usage. And they simply were going to use that opportunity to change how they use their space to emphasize more the collaborative nature, and because that was the purpose for their office space. So I mentioned a couple of these specific cases already in, in the, the course of this. But again, the larger employers continue to have the lowest onsite percentages. And many of them are giving an option to return, but they're just not getting close to their current onsite caps. The desire from employees to return isn't even as high as whatever their sort of low thresholds for maximum, maximum occupancy for their buildings are. And we, we also saw that the employers that had high return rates did tell us that they had mandated returns. So obviously, nobody is in the business of trying to make predictions in the 2020s. But just to sort of, based on what we heard back, if you were trying to estimate what it was going to look like in terms of the sort of presence back in the market, it, you would, it would look like you would suggest probably a, a quiet first quarter with maybe a bump in occupancies in the second quarter, maybe potentially a, a bigger bump around June, and then the third quarter probably with the most significant returns pending all those organizations that said they did not have a specified return date. They're obviously at a lot of uncertainty here. And, and then one major piece of particular uncertainty here is the comfort with transit. So that, how that plays out and whether people are equally comfortable on transit as they are in the office is going to be really important, and that's a focus for our organization in particular. As we start to get indications of people coming back into the market, we'll be really emphasizing the fact that transit vehicles, by the nature of their air circulation and filtration, are actually generally cleaner spaces air-wise than, than contained enclosed buildings. So hopefully with that messaging, we will build comfort with transit as, as there's comfort with offices, but it's, it is going to be a challenge, we know. One last thing I wanted to share, and just really quickly, we, we took some time, there's, everyone and their grandmother has been asking people about, you know, surveying remote work, and we've done a lot of that, so has everyone else. And, but we took some time and synthesized about 40 different studies on this topic conducted over the last year and a half or two years, representing about 175,000 respondents. And the four core things that came out of that, yes, remote work does seem to be working pretty well for people. Productivity seems to be pretty well maintained. It has not been optimal during the pandemic. That's not sort of the, the recommended practices and conditions for it. But at the same time, the office is very clearly going to return. We're seeing majorities across multiple studies saying, of people saying they miss their colleagues. We're seeing pretty consistent findings that collaboration and collaborative work does seem to perform better in person. So those things continue to have very high value. And so what we expect is that the future will see more balanced approaches to work, which matches what we hear from actual people, which is that they would like to work one or more days per week remotely, and that the average preference is actually somewhere around two days per week. So we don't expect this sort of remote work to replace everything, office, you know, office spaces to go away or anything like that. But, but hopefully a more balanced approach to what work looks like. And I'll just wrap that up by saying, that's our focus as a TMA right now, is really helping employers of all sizes to be intentional and start to think about how their work is going to mix when they have both office and remote work occurring across individuals. So if you're onsite some days, whether that's through a sort of gradual return back into an office or a future where remote work, you know, continues to be a part of your, your work life, striking the right balance is really important, and there are a lot of sort of useful things to keep in mind as you, as you build a program and practice around that. So we have a whole like website around this. I want to talk about the details of it. If anyone is curious ever, it's perimeter.rebalancing work. We're putting up a lot of content there and continuing to add to it. But I, I really hope that this has been helpful. Love, you know, if there are any questions or if anyone wants to follow up outside of this as well, more than happy to, to be a, of assistance wherever we can.
Thank y'all. So Council, does anybody have any questions or comments? John?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. It was very insightful. The one point that I think might have been missing on the presentation though was something that maybe you're not allowed to talk about, and that was the dates in which your contracts are coming up for renewal for each of the buildings in the sense of what percentage of tenants are going to be renewing in this month, this year. I'm guessing many of those leases are for long periods of time, five years, three years. I'm not 100% sure, but as far as when, when do the leases start to turn over? Is there a time period of that, and how would we track that moving forward?
Yeah, that is a really interesting question. It is definitely not something we have, we have access to large, to that sort of information. But that, that is going to be an interesting question to it, and seeing our organizations, what decisions they make when they're faced with that choice in particular.
I'm just interested long-term for when they, the renewal rates, at what percentage do they renew for the full floor? Or do they downsize, or do they move out completely? And I'm just, I'm worried about those resignings. Thank you. Good presentation.
Anybody else? Tom, thank you.
Thank you again. I'd just like to echo what John said. Thank you, Johann. Great presentation. I appreciate, you know, the PCID has always been a great partner for the city, and I appreciate you guys being proactive in this. Obviously, we know the importance of the perimeter market to, to the city. So it's, it's important to stay on top of this stuff and be ahead of it. So I do have one question related to the MARTA, and I, I don't know if you have an answer, but I figured I'd ask.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, an important part of this is, you know, we, we were very fortunate to have the rail station there, but we always talk about the importance of that last mile connectivity.
Yeah.
And the bus service has not caught up, and I know Jim and Lynn have been working hard with MARTA to try and, and get some form of bus service back. Do we know how much of an impact the, the, the lack of bus services had on, on, on MARTA ridership, or is, we just don't, unable to figure that out?
Interestingly, bus ridership is, is up a lot. It's, it's recovered much more than rail ridership. And, and that's allowed MARTA to continue to bring back more of the bus routes. They actually have a timeline for a number of routes that they continue to update every week. So we, we have a scoring system that they've shared that shows us sort of when each route will, is next. And they can't set timelines all the way down the list, but it looks like that is, that's trending in the right way. And, and rail ridership has hinged a lot more in office occupancy than, than I think, frankly, anybody ever realized. So I don't know if that wasn't quite your question, but certainly like optimistic about the bus routes and how buses will, will continue to, to be able to come back into the operation system.
You know, it did. And, you know, part of the question was how much of the lack of, of bus service right now might be impacting the return to work in the perimeter area, and if there's, you know, if we might be able to light a fire on the MARTA with that.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're not, we're seeing largely the decision about return is driven by employers so far. You know, the employers that have offered it aren't, you know, made it optional, aren't seeing their caps hit. So it's not, that doesn't necessarily suggest to us that it's necessarily an issue of people being able to get into the office completely. I, I'm sure there are those cases, of course, but nothing yet that suggests like that's the major, major factor.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? I, nobody. I have a question, a similar question, which is off of Tom's question, which is, do you have a sense, there's, it's a two-part, of any employers that have told people they need to come back? And what they're doing for the last mile connectivity issue without, are the shuttles running, or is PCID running?
Many, many of the shuttles are still running. Yeah, we've, some properties, mostly properties where they have a, a core tenant that is not active, or, or maybe a partner in the shuttle financially. Those are ones where they are not necessarily back. And large, the large properties that maintain multiple shuttles have downsized. Many properties have reduced hours. There are sort of different approaches to try to managing the cost for that. And, but I think the last time we checked in, we still saw something like 60, I want to say it was like 60% or 70% of the shuttles were still active. And the, the employer-specific ones are the ones that represent most of the ones that are, are sort of, like Cox's is not active, UPS's is still active because it's part of a loop, and they have some people who rely on it. Mercedes is not active, so.
Okay. And then are the employers offering any kind of alternatives to get people that they need to come in back? Like, are they offering Uber cards or anything like that? Have you heard?
We haven't heard anything specific on that side, which is interesting. We, we have heard from a couple that do have some people who are, have had some issues with the lack of a property shuttle, and then people are having to sort of piece that together themselves. And, but we haven't heard a specific case of an employer intervening in that, though. Obviously, that is a need.
And on the MARTA, which Councilman Wright Teicher and I have been working on, we've been working on the, the other side of town, on the east side of town, where people are more dependent just for their, to get to work. There, there's no train station over there. Do you have a sense that the MARTA return to normal trans, normal bus routes, for example, in the perimeter will correspond with return to work, or you don't have a sense about that yet?
They're, they, they're continuing to return routes. So I, I mean, based on the timelines for returns so far, I mean, it kind of depends when you think people will return to work.
Right.
I, you know, if I was a gambling person, I, I would expect the bus routes to come back first. But, you know, it's such a subjective thing, so much uncertainty, so.
Right. I think our, I don't know about perimeter routes, but the rest of Dunwoody routes are way on the, right, Jim? They're way at the bottom of the list in terms of.
Yeah, when I looked at it, they were, they were a little ways down. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank y'all very much. Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Johann.
My pleasure.
And that's it. Nobody else? Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. McKay, okay, you are next with our internal audit report. Is, is he going just, Eric, does anybody need to introduce him or anything? No?
No, I think he's, he's.
Okay.
You are.
I'm ready. All right. First thing I wanted to do is to thank Mayor Deutsch for speaking for me at the Fourth Annual Institute of Internal Auditors Conference at the end of January. She represented herself perfectly, as well as representing the city, as you would expect. The subject was the importance of an internal audit function for local governments. Also on the panel with her was Councilwoman Jennifer Ide from the City of Atlanta, Commissioner Steve Bradshaw from DeKalb County, and Gwinnett School Superintendent, Mr. Will Banks. Thank you, Mayor, for, for doing that. It was very insightful for our 150 auditors that we had at the conference. For my report for tonight, which is, held in advance, I'm going to go over the internal audit work for this quarter, which is continuous monitoring, the fourth quarter report, update on prior recommendations, the plan and the completion of the plan for 2020, and what is on the schedule for 2021. The first item is continuous monitoring, and that is where I take a look at the financial report prepared by the Director of Finance, Linda. And I looked at that, as I do each quarter, and I found the report reasonable. I also read her letter, which outlines variations. Of course, at year-end, there's more variations. And in our once-in-a-lifetime, hopefully pandemic year, there's even more variations from budget than whatever than any other time. But it all made sense to me. And in my summary, as I say, hopefully each time, and I repeat this time, I, I didn't find anything out of compliance with the charter, the budget, or other ordinances. The audit I worked on for this quarter was accounts payable, dispersments, and purchasing procedures. As shown, I reviewed the reasonableness of the procedures. Reviewed that department heads are approving invoices before they get in line for payment. And I found the. And I found the finance department has a a good internal control of having a three tiered review. The initial review, the mid-level review, and then the final review by the Director of Finance. If in fact, the amount is less than is, is below her limit, if it's above her limit, then the city manager has to review it. In all items I selected in October 2020, I found the procedures were working fine. I also took 10 invoices and took them all the way back to the invoice and the purpose. And I found all those in place. Some of the, some of the ones I looked at included low and professional services from our legal firm. And further, and I also find so important is the dispersments tie back into the bank reconciliation. For those that aren't financially oriented or marginally know that that is just so important, that the bank reconciliations are being done on time and that the dispersments that are represented as being made, those are shown in the bank statement. So the summary for that is the same as the previous one. I found no, nothing out of line from a charter, budget or ordinance type things. But I did have one observation, which I have here. And that is an $18,000 check properly approved had to be voided and reissued a couple of weeks later because the vendor indicated they had never received it. And the procedure was fine. But what I brought up is that we should be doing a lot more of these dispersments via ACH or some other electronic means. The city agrees with that. The system is awkward to do it. But in these days and in, in connection with working from home, it'd be a lot nicer if you're just issuing checks electronically instead of cranking out the, the paper checks. And the city agrees with that and is looking into how to issue more checks electronically with the goal of getting up as close to 100% as humanly possible. Next is update on prior internal audit reports. The first one is on the Dunwoody Senior Baseball. And it was a year ago with this meeting, which was an in-person meeting and was the last in-person meeting me as the auditor was at. And, and it was the first meeting, I believe, the Mayor Deutsch was the mayor, and I think we had a couple new council members, and I certainly delivered the, the I don't know, the worst report findings in my tenure, tenure at the city of Dunwoody. I'm pleased to report tonight that the, as I've reported in the last couple of quarters, the city took it seriously. There's a new there is a signed contract now. I was gonna say a new signed contract, but that was one of the issues. There wasn't a contract. So there is a contract. The procedures related to athletic associations is all incorporated into that contract or attached to that contract. The issue is off the table, implemented. And whenever auditors have such an issue that comes before the governing body, all auditors ask for is the ability to just openly report whatever we find. And I got to tell you, the mayor, the city council, city manager, assistant city manager, director of finance, everybody was supportive of me bringing that forward. Then everyone dealt with it and put the proper procedures in place. So good job. Back to you all. The next thing I had was the I had done a let me change the page here if I can. The next thing is the whistleblower hotline recommendation. And as I said in a prior quarter, the Audit Committee Chair Barbara Jessup called me one day and said, you know, this city really should have a whistleblower hotline. And when you look at the, what's called the Report to the Nation from the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, the one thing, always number one, that finds fraud and abuse the best is a hotline whistleblower line. So the city is now fully implemented that. Congratulations. It's been circulated to employees and vendors. Everything's being done right. Very good. I have the internal audit plan here for 20, 2020. That, like so many other things, was fluid during the year, but now everything we'd agreed to have on the plan has been done. I also wanted to mention that at the last meeting, Joe Sekunder did ask about what other cities are doing related to that audit that included having two systems, see, click, fix, and I were Q, if I pronounce that close to right. Anyhow, Joe or everyone that the, what I found in looking at Sandy Springs, Johns Creek, Brookhaven and Milton is that everybody goes through the same situation as we have. One city has up to 30 different categories of things you can click on. But then when you go down below what you click on is what your problem is, it goes to various systems within the city. So hoping to find someplace where it all was accumulated in one place, but I, I did not find that. And if the citizen clicks the wrong button, then the department heads behind it transfer that information from one department to another. Next, I have the internal audit plan for 2021, which we discussed at the last meeting, I guess was in November. First quarter of this year, doing a fraud risk assessment, followed by the review of the CAFR. The third quarter, looking at Dunwoody not-for-profits, and in the fourth quarter, purchasing cards and fuel costs. At the last time I was in front of the city council, there was some talk about whether we should have a cybersecurity audit. And the mayor decided the mayor, council and the city manager would look into that next year. I should also mention that earlier today, the Audit Committee met. They I reviewed this report with them and they were okay with everything that's in it. And further at that meeting, the auditors from Malden and Jenkins were there and they outlined their plan for the external audit this year. The year ended 12/31/20. They, they audit most every city in the state of Georgia. And the audit is off to a good start. We also said our goal is to issue the, the CAFR, as it's called, before June 30th. The six-month out date that it has to be issued by would prefer not to have an extension. You know? We hope that conditions are such that we don't need to. Last year, the state gave just blanket extensions to everybody. But we'll see what develops. The, a timeline is developed and it calls for the CAFR to be to the Audit Committee about June 1st, to be to the City Council mid-June and we've got the plan. We hope the, hope it's done sooner. But that would be perfectly fine if we meet those dates. So that Mayor, that would complete my report. As always, we'll take any questions.
Thank you so much. All right. Questions, comments? Tom?
Uh, thank you. Yeah. And Bill, thank you. Once again, for your work on this. Always appreciate hearing from you and always very grateful that we have a, a strong staff and department heads that keep us in compliance and we don't have a lot of issues to report. So that, that always makes me feel good. And so what I tend to focus a lot on are your recommendations. I just have a question on one of the recommendations is, and it might not necessarily be for you, Bill. It might be more for Jay or Linda, if you guys are online there. And that was the one dealing with the, the electronic dispersments. And I'm, I'm just curious if, if we're facing any, any challenges or roadblocks, whether they be legal or technological or procedural in that area, and what is our progress there? And when do we think we, we could in, increase that and get that up to, if not completely at 100%, go in that route with our dispersments?
I am not sure. I think Linda is on, but I'm not sure if she's promoted yet, but that actually came up during the Audit Committee today. And she is meeting with our financial institution to discuss that. There, there are a little few logistical issues with it, but it's a priority on our end to make it happen as soon as possible.
It's, it's good to hear that. And if there's obviously anything that you need from council, please let us know so that we could speed that along. That's all I have. And thanks, thank you, Jay, and thanks again, Bill.
Joe?
Yeah, Bill. Yeah. Thanks for the report. Appreciate all your work here. I'm looking at the lap, the, the 2020 calendar year of what you've done. Refresh my memory, on the second quarter of 2020, you have procurement card. It talks about P-card policy. Now, I, look, we're, we're, we're the strategic high level folks. We're not in the day-to-day here as elected officials, but the city, let me ask you a couple of questions. We are, we have a procurement card procedure manual, right?
Right.
Did you review that at that time?
Yes, I did.
Okay, all right. I, I just wanted to and from an outsider, lay, layperson perspective, I know this wasn't on your last quarter, but I've, I've read in the newspaper that other municipalities who shall not be named have had a historical problem of P-cards. And you know, my day job, my, my, my regular day job, I've got a corporate credit card and it's extremely locked down. I still have to file an expense report for every time I use that card. Is that, without me reviewing our process, but is that basically how it works? If I do use a, you're giving me a city Dunwoody credit card, does, does that still have to be through the all expense of process and all that approvals?
Yes. So that is the way it works here at Dunwoody, as you described it. Someone can use their card. They have limits on how many times they can use it in a day. They have customized limits on how much each person can charge. And there's also restricted places where they cannot run that card through. After they make the charge, they have so many days to turn in the receipt. And the receipt is reviewed by their supervisor to clear the thing for payment to the creditor debit card company. So those procedures are in place.
And then on the, on the back end, are we getting a consolidated billing and we're doing a reconciliation and looking what's open and, and closed?
Yes, indeed.
Perfect.
And the city is doing it on a timely basis. And it wasn't too long ago that, that it, it popped up someone who was buying things that their supervisor felt was inappropriate. And that was dealt with appropriately. So those, the, the controls are in place and all known times where someone has abused it, they've been discharged.
Sure, sure. Yeah. And there, there can be things that slip through the cracks, maybe inadvertently. And then that's all dealt with. Sure. Let me ask you about, are you on another cycle that you'll be going over our purchasing? Anything with purchasing or purchasing policy the rest of this, this coming calendar year?
I, I am not, but certainly can.
So, you know, as, as well new to council and so on, but in our purchasing policy, which is dated 2018, the last update, there's a section on environmentally preferable goods and services. It's section number six in the procurement policy, the latest one dated 2018. And, you know, I, I would appreciate a review on that of, of metrics of what, what are we doing on those areas? Just, just to check in on, on that.
I could work that in. That'd be fine.
That'd be great, Bill. Thank you. And then, well, it's back to my peers and so on, or is it back to Jay or Eric about the whistleblower? Jay, Eric, any conversation about that?
I don't have anything else to add on that. It's something that we've put into the system now. And we have a telephone number now to, for people to report if there's any kind of issues.
Great. Okay. All right. I have no further questions again. Thanks a lot, Bill. Appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Joe.
Uh, John?
Thank you, Bill. Um, within the last couple of months, we've put together some CARES funding for nonprofits, for other agencies and local businesses. Jay, maybe you can give a brief update. We have a contractor that assists with the funding. Can you give me an overview, Jay, on the auditing of how that financial goes? And do we need an internal auditor to double check the contractor is really my question? Tell me about the contractor, the auditing and the contractors.
To kind of give you the, the nutshell way of working, we're talking the business grants is what you're actually about specifically.
Can you speak up, Jay, a little bit, please?
Let's see if we're there. Oh, let me change the different mic. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, what we did was our firm that handles our finance and administration part, Jacobs, is doing the receipt of information and the receipt of applications from businesses in Dunwoody. They're doing the first cursory review to make sure that, as we say, all the boxes are checked, everything's in good standing, all is in order. Once that list is compiled, is those that are qualified. Linda and the finance team are doing, and also Rosemary and Michael in economic development are also doing a secondary review on it. So basically, it's not just one person saying yes, it's a second person saying yes, both city staff and contractor. Uh, so there's multiple levels of review to see what's missing or for people who are entities that are not qualified. Um, I'd be more than happy if Bill wants to spot check and go through them. I mean, we'd welcome that also.
Yeah, I don't know if Bill's time or what his schedule allows. I just want to make sure that we are doing, from a city council perspective, that we've given away a lot of money. I just want to make sure there's controls in place, which it sounds like there are. we've given away a lot of money. I just want to make sure there's controls in place, which it sounds like there are. But if Mr. Mulcahy was interested in reviewing any of that, you know, I'd allow him or welcome him to take a look at it. I'm not saying it has to be done. I'm just want to make sure that we discuss the possibilities of it.
I think the best thing we did is when we started the ball rolling with even the not-for-profit grants, we're having at minimum two or if not three people independently doing each one. And in fact, we kind of joked that we had more checks and balances and sign-offs on the business grants than we've had on anything we've ever done.
Thank you very much. That's all I had.
I'd be I'd be glad to look at something on that. That's certainly a high-risk area. It's a new area. And, you know, whether it's the newspaper or other industries or the TV, you're hearing about abuses in that area. I think it'd be good to look at it.
Okay, we can discuss that and get back to you. Anybody else? I appreciate your report and your hard work and the work of the Audit Committee, and we will see you again soon.
Very good. Good care.
All right, next up, we have a presentation from the Dunwoody Preservation Trust, Suzanne Huff. I think I saw you on here. You are. So you may begin whenever you're ready.
Okay, the host has stopped my video.
Okay, let's Ginger or Jay, can you address the fact that Suzanne doesn't have video?
I just started it back up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let me share my screen here. Okay, thanks for everybody for letting me present tonight. My name is Suzanne Huff. I am the Executive Director of Dunwoody Preservation Trust. I've been here for just under three years. My first year was part-time, and so two years almost full-time. Just a little bit about me, I have lived in Dunwoody for 50 years. And I know I just dated myself with that comment. But my family, I was raised here. My parents still live in the original home, so I've seen a lot of changes over the past 50 years. As for Dunwoody Preservation Trust, we were founded in 1995. Joyce Amaker and Lynn Byrd are two longtime Dunwoody residents. They woke one morning to find that two of the three railroad section houses had been demolished overnight. And developers were closing in on a more significant property, the Cheeks' Rule House, or what we call the Dunwoody Farmhouse a lot of times. Both women's were experienced preservationists, and so they founded DPT with seed money from the Dunwoody Homeowners Association. Our first order of business was to save the farmhouse, the Cheeks' Rule Farmhouse, and we were successful with that goal. And today, it serves as a central property that is a gathering place for the city of Dunwoody. It was painstakingly rehabilitated, and it's the site of community gatherings, such as the Fourth of July Parade and Light of Dunwoody. And often, as I mentioned, it is referred to as the Dunwoody Farmhouse, and it's central to everything here in Dunwoody. I've always looked at it as downtown Dunwoody. There is a history room inside that is open to the public during business hours during each week. And there's tea service available if anybody wants to go by and see what's inside the house. This house also features prominently in the seal of Dunwoody, the city seal, as well as DPT's logo seen here. Throughout the years, other things that Dunwoody Preservation Trust has helped contributed to the community, both the Cheeks' Rule Farmhouse, as well as the Donaldson Banister Farm, are now a part of the Georgia, as well as the National Register of Historic Places. We maintain New Hope Cemetery and Stephen Martin Family Cemeteries. We've partnered with the city of Dunwoody to rehabilitate the Donaldson Banister Farm. The property is open to the public. We host community events there, and it can be booked for private events as well. We host Lemonade Days each year. This last year should have been our 21st year. And it was a fundraiser that was started to help replant the Dunwoody Forest after the tornado in 1998. And then it has since turned into one of Dunwoody's premier community events, and it's our major fundraiser. We host educational events. Education is one of our pillars. We host Camp Flashback, a summer camp. We host school and scout field trips. We have an adult education program called History Alive. In addition, we host a number of other community events, such as Apple Cider Days, Flick and Chick, Farm-to-Table Dinner, and A.T. Most prominent these days is the Donaldson Banister Farm, and it has come a long way since we partnered with the city. It is the city of Dunwoody Park, and it was levelingly restored with a partnership between the city of Dunwoody and Dunwoody Preservation Trust. I do want to mention that Dunwoody Preservation Trust has spent over $910,000 of its own money over the past 10 years to help rehabilitate this place. That's outside of what the city has put into it. And that includes two master plans that were put together, the FIT grants, landscaping, and other projects to help bring the property to what it is today. And it's a 2.9-acre property, and it's actually been open to the public for less than three years. It opened on May 4, 2018, just after I started working at DPT. Since the property opened in May of 2018, we have started Camp Flashback. 2021 will be our fourth year. We restarted our adult education program with History Alive. We have six programs per year, and at one point, we probably will increase that. We started a yearly Farm-to-Table Dinner. Last year, 2020, was the sesquicentennial or the 150th anniversary. Try to say sesquicentennial 10 times fast. We had planned a multiple celebratory events, but we were only able to put in a champagne concert in January. And then there was a tea that we hosted the first weekend of March before COVID shut everything down last year. We were able to start opening up a little bit summertime and on board through the fall, and we were able to host Apple Cider Days. It was our fifth year last year. We've worked with scout troops and homeschool groups for tours and educational field trips. We offer fitness and yoga classes four times a week, Monday and Thursday evenings, and Friday and Saturday mornings, and other events that we've hosted, Flick and Chick, Painting with a Purpose, number of other smaller events. As everybody knows, COVID-19 definitely had an impact on everybody in the past year. The most significant impact to DPT was financially. The fact that we could not host Lemonade Days last year, that's our primary and most significant fundraiser. We also lost the private events that are held at the Donaldson Banister Farm weddings, bar mitzvahs, graduation parties, fundraisers. And all those events actually to help contribute to the hotel occupancy, too, I'm sure, with the city of Dunwoody. The loss of both of those resulted in a 36% drop in revenue in 2020. We were also unable to continue the sesquicentennial celebration events. And we had started working on a docent program and tours to be held at the house monthly, but that was all put on hold until we get past COVID. However, there were positive outcomes from last year. This time last February, I signed the check to purchase a 40-by-40 tent to cover the plaza area next to the barn. But it has turned out to be a blessing. Because of having this covered space during warmer weather, when things started opening back up again, it allowed us to restart our History Alive program. Of the six programs we had planned last year, we were able to host four of them. And it allows us to host smaller events, such as the Rotary Club, and we had a few small weddings last fall out there. It also provided covered space for Camp Flashback, and I'll mention why not in storms in a moment. It provided cover for Apple Cider Days when we had our crafts out there. And then it was a backup for anybody that attended the Farm-to-Table Dinner. That was our backup should it have rained last last fall. Camp Flashback, last year, we had planned to have five full weeks, 25 campers per week. And we put on five full weeks of Camp Flashback last year with no incidences of COVID. I'm sure a lot of it is because we kept outside. We followed all the protocol calls that were specified by the state of Georgia, CDC, American Campus Association, et cetera. We had full registration March of last year. We lost a lot, but we definitely refilled, backfilled all the cancellations last year once COVID kind of settled in. The number of campers we can host each year is definitely limited by the amount of inside space that we should have in case of thunderstorms. The tent is not thunderstorm protective. It is aluminum and can attract lightning. So the number of kids we can put in the house is the number of campers we can have each week. Because we, there were a couple of times that we had some thunderstorms in the afternoons. But it's been well received, and as far as this year, we're already over halfway full. Other positive outcomes from last year, we were able to hold our second annual Farm-to-Table Dinner. The first year, if you attended, it was a big, long, family-style table. We modified that last year, and we sold tables by tables of four, six, or eight. And it was held it over two nights as well, so that in case it rained, we can move everybody under the tent. So we were able to have that. We also started looking at virtual programming. We had some put on online recipes and activities for the kids. We had self-guided tours. We also, there is an app for your phones called Pocket Sites, and we created a historic driving tour of Dunwoody. So you can go and drive and see all the historic houses that we have noted within the city of Dunwoody. We also started a Facebook Live Friday at the Farm video series, and it's still continuing today. Every Friday, I go out and videotape something. We focused on the history of the Donaldson family, of the Donaldson Farm, with all the families that lived there. We've now expanded. Last week's was on the railroad that used to run through Dunwoody. There are times that we talk about the events that are going on at the Donaldson Banister Farm camp, different things. So we invite you to come out and take a look at it. All the old videos are still on our Facebook page, and I also upload them to the, our YouTube channel. We were able also to host our Apple Cider Days on the farm last year, and again, in a modified format. Instead of just opening it up all day to anybody who wanted to come, we set up three sessions and limited each session to 100 attendees that were spread across the entire 2.89 acres. We had animals, we had crafts, we had music, we had scarecrows, and we involved the community. And we had a great response from the community with our Scarecrow Row. We had individuals, nonprofits, and businesses contribute a scarecrow, so we set them up down the driveway around the house. And we had prizes for Best in Show, People's Choice, Scariest, and Honorable Mention. And I'll say all those are award winners, except I did stick my little Lemonade Day girl out there. She was not honorable mention. We didn't give ourselves a prize. And we also used the last of our capital funds to enclose the garage at the Donaldson Banister Farm. And this is a beautiful space. If you haven't seen it, come on out there. It's going to allow us to be able to host a few more campers this summer. So we have bumped up the number of campers that we can have each week of camp, because we have another room. We can stick them in should it storm. We also had our January History Alive program, which was an exhibit in there. And back during Apple Cider Days, we did have a virtual auction in the fall, and we displayed the art at Apple Cider Days in the garage at that point in time. So it's a great place. It's heated, and we can close it off or we can open it up. Looking ahead to 2021, here are our scheduled events, community events that we're looking at. As I mentioned, Camp Flashback 2021, we opened up registration January 1. We're about halfway full at this point. We hosted our very first History Alive program of the year, which was an exhibit saluting the life of Martin Luther King in our newly enclosed garage. The rest of the programs we plan to have under the tent, the tent currently is off because we don't want it to ice and possibly cave in. But we have five more programs scheduled. The next is March 21. It's the History of Barbecue. So come on out and join us. In April, April 17, we're planning to have Spring Fling, which is going to be similar to Apple Cider Days in the fall, because we cannot host Lemonade Days this April. We realized that. So we're looking for a place filler to keep DPT on everybody's minds in the spring. May 2, we're shooting have our annual tea. This time, it will be under the tent rather than in the house. We are planning to have Lemonade Days at Brook Run Park, August 18 through 22. That is also the same weekend that the nature center is having their butterfly, but we've already worked together. We're talking to Discover Dunwoody about promoting a Come to Dunwoody Weekend. We're not necessarily going to be, yeah, we're not necessarily going to be competing against ourselves. We're going to be competing against everybody and his brother at that point in time. If if our communities are starting to open back up, everybody's going to be trying to have events at that point in time. So we want to draw people to Dunwoody to come to our events here in Dunwoody. So that's why we're working with Discover Dunwoody to do just that. In September, we have scheduled our Farm-to-Table Dinner, November, Apple Cider Days. We also want to have an open house once or twice this year at the Cheeks' Rule Farmhouse to get the community again looking at that centralized location. That is the one property that DPT owns. And then, as always, we'll participate in the Fourth of July Parade and Light of Dunwoody. As far as facilities and other things, we are actually currently working to open a history room, history wing. That's hard to say sometimes, upstairs of the Donaldson Banister Farmhouse. DPT has a lot of historic artifacts, lots of farm tools, lots and lots of tools and photographs that actually need to be displayed for the community and not stored away and been somewhere. We are currently applying for grants to allow us to finish the upstairs of the house to provide a place for that. We hope this year, when things start opening up more, that we can start our docent program, the Donaldson Banister Farm, and host a monthly tour of the house and property. We regularly host in the fall, or typically host in the fall, a tour of the Stephen Martin Cemetery. We want to do that again. And in the spring, we're looking at maybe a tour of the New Hope Cemetery. It's been a while since we've had a tour of that property. And I'm not sure if y'all followed along. About this time last year, we had an old oak tree that had died at the Donaldson Banister Farm. We had it cut down. It's going to be carved into a relief carving. We've had it, the tree sliced up and is currently in dry storage, and it will be killed dry. We have a sculptor, and right now, he's working on sketches. But it'll be a biased relief carving depicting the history of Dunwoody from the Indians on up till today. And plans are to have it hung over under the barn, under the overhang that faces the field. So it'll be available for everybody to see. And all of this has been accomplished with volunteers and a very small paid staff. Our board members regularly give thousands of hours. In 2018, they gave 5,388 hours alone, and that's just our board, not other volunteers with our organization. Our staff, as I said, I'm the only full-time person as the Executive Director, and we have four part-time employees. Sam McIntyre is the property manager, and he works with Brent and Gabe at the Donaldson Banister Farm. And he's really helped keep things in line and moving and saved a lot of money. Rachel Sloan's our administrative assistant. Dolores Lauderdale is our private events manager. And Hope Fulmer is our community events manager, and she's also taking on business sponsorships for us. And just Apple Ciders Days alone last fall was staffed by primarily teenagers and scouts, but they gave over 180 hours of volunteer time just for on that one day alone, not counting all the volunteer hours, getting ready and afterwards. But they use this time to help their service hours as required for school and for other scouting organizations, key clubs, things like that. And DPT's mission statement, our mission statement is that we're dedicated to preserving the history and heritage of Dunwoody. We will encourage, inspire exploration of Dunwoody's history through educational programs, publications, collections, and research. And our programs will celebrate the past, honor the present, and build for the future, which you'll see us mentioning past, present, future quite a bit. But all this is to give Dunwoody a strong sense of historic place. And we definitely, DPT appreciates our partnership with the city of Dunwoody. Together, we have accomplished a lot, very much, and we look forward to many more years of working together. And I do want to thank those council members that are current members of DPT and invite those that are not members to please join us, because it's only through our members and volunteers that we're able to accomplish what we have done. So with that, thank you, Lynn, and everybody.
Thank you, Suzanne. If you want to unshare your screen, I'll see if anybody has any questions. I need to be able, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Or just? Just a quick, great job, Suzanne. It's good to see you virtually. But awesome job to you and all your volunteers, you know, staying alive through COVID. Great job. Kudos.
Thank you. It's been an interesting year, as y'all know, too.
Joe?
Yeah, ditto Suzanne. I, I love the History Alive. I tell you, I went to the first one, full disclosure, in October. You had the Mark Warren, the ancient ways of the Cherokee. And I sat there and I tell you, that was the first time I felt like a normal human being, sitting around a bunch of people, listening to an academic person and having an adult conversation. I mean, it was so peaceful and so centering and it felt like, I really felt a lot, I swear, I mean it. It was just such a, you know, grounding experience. I say that quasi emotionally, but it was just really great. I, I'd love to see more. Of course, it's always about demand. You know, people say, I don't want you to do something every day of the week, but you gotta have people show up. I would love to see that, the, the adult programming, the education, understanding, the sense of history where we're sitting. And me personally, I'd love to hear more about the pre-European settlers, the Native Americans. What was really here? What was that Hightower Trail? Where, where, where was this line? You know, all these, these footpaths and I love to hear more about that. And the other thing I'd love, I mean, first of all, we need to just go have lunch, social distancing. But cross-city history tours. So let's have like a half a day thing and then stop at a restaurant or whatever.
Right, yeah.
Go, go see all these different spots. Go together, get on a shuttle bus or ride bikes, whatever. And, and, and see all these places in, at once and ghost tours too, ghost tours, spooky. Yeah, so anyway, I love what you guys are doing. Thank you, thank you so much. All right, thanks Suzanne.
And if anybody, I know Joe, we talked about giving you a tour. So just let me know if anybody ever wants to come by and just let me know. And I'll be glad to give y'all a tour of the property or any of the historic properties that we have.
Anybody else? Thank you so much and thank y'all for sticking through it, through the pandemic and not just, you know, closing your doors and taking your toys and going home. So we appreciate it. And I know that the park itself is actually getting a lot of use.
Oh, it's fun to watch the kids in the afternoon right now. They're just running, they're doing imaginary play. It's, it's a fun place to watch right now.
Right, and it's very peaceful with the swing and all that. So it's a great little place for people to find some green space in Dunwoody if you haven't already used it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on anything on the consent agenda? Joe?
Just a generic question, just confirmation from the authors that there's been no changes since we've last seen these documents. In fact, I guess that's all Michael's side. Well, aside from the meeting minutes. Michael, are we all good with the docs? Just confirm me.
Yes, there haven't been any changes.
Perfect.
Move to approve.
Moved by John. Second by Jim. Any further discussion questions? Seeing none, please signify by raising your hand, your support for passing the consent agenda. That was not very eloquent. Any opposition? Seeing none, sharing that passage unanimously. I think you have to read this one Sharon, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
So we're moving to business items, action items now. Number nine is consideration for approval, not-for-profit grant amendments, Jay Benicki.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This will be fairly brief. About two weeks ago, you added another 100,000 to the not-for-profit grants for those that hit the $50,000 cap mark. And I'm glad to say that the Community Assistance Center, Corners Academy and St. Vincent de Paul have all used their $50,000 grant completely. Talked each of them, both of them are able to find $25,000 worth of rental assistance that they can work with over the next short term. So all you've got is a simple one paragraph amendment for each one of those contracts to increase their amount from 50,000 to 75,000.
Great. Any questions, comments?
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Pam. Was that a second by Jim?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? I just want to thank you Jay and everybody at City Hall and the nonprofits for getting on this so that we can help people as quickly as possible. With that, signify your support for passing these amendments by raising your hand. All right, any opposition? Seeing none, sharing that passage unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, you're up for the next two things.
Okay, the, the item before you for discussion tonight is a presentation of the conceptual design alternatives and a summary of the public input for improvements along Mount Vernon Road from Corners Drive to Gramercy Court. Improvements on Mount Vernon Road are recommended in the city's transportation plan. And this segment was listed as a mid-range project in the work program. Can everybody see the presentation? Okay. So this this section of Mount Vernon Road is currently is between the sections that we've already approved on Mount Vernon from the western city limit to Corners Drive. We've added sidewalk where there was sidewalk missing, incorporated bike lanes over most of that section. Added a left turn lane. Our added left turn lane capacity at Mount Vernon Way and Birmack Road intersections. And to the east of the proposed project, we are in the final design phase for improvements between Mount Vernon Road and Jet Ferry, Mount Vernon Place and Jet Ferry. So the project being discussed tonight would fill in the gap between these projects. This segment of Mount Vernon was added to the capital work plan because it has risen to near the top of the list in the sidewalk program. And the pavement is also in need of resurfacing. Currently, this, this section of Mount Vernon Road does not have any sidewalk on the south side of the road. And there's an older four-foot wide sidewalk on the north side with a narrow buffer between the sidewalk and the, and the roadway. And there are currently no accommodations for bicycles. Seventy percent of this segment is three lanes wide with, with one through lane in each direction and an auxiliary lane that becomes a right turn lane, both at Corners Drive and at Forest Springs Drive. The most recent update to the city's transportation plan included an analysis of the traffic and crash data for Mount Vernon Road in order to evaluate the need for left turn lanes. The four side streets between Corners Drive and Mount Vernon Place have by far the highest left turn volumes of any of the unsignalized side streets that east of Dunwoody Village. On the north side of the road, you have Vernon Lake Drive and Forest Springs Drive, which are main entrances into the large Dunwoody Club Forest neighborhood. And on the south side, you have Stratham Drive and Meadow Lake Drive, which carry a lot of traffic to and from the high school and Vanderland. All four of these roads function really as neighborhood collector types, type streets. There's, there are very various published guidelines for the number of left turns that would justify consideration of a left turn lane. The left turn volumes at all four of these intersections are one and a half to two times higher than the minimum Georgia DOT threshold. Looking at the crashes, the crash analysis in the transportation plan looked at the frequency and severity of crashes on the, at the side streets along Mount Vernon over a three-year period. The Vernon Lake Drive intersection had a higher number of crashes than the average for the whole corridor. Nine crashes over a three-year period. And two out of three of the crashes that were occurring at that intersection resulted in injuries. The safety of that intersection was specifically mentioned in a couple of the written comments that we received from the public. On the other end of this corridor, Meadow Lake Drive didn't, didn't have that many crashes. But both crashes that did occur there resulted in injuries over this three-year period. Okay, based on the policy guidance in the transportation plan, we, we had a consultant develop three conceptual alternatives for this section of the corridor. The bicycle and pedestrian accommodations are the same for all three concepts and are consistent with what is being planned for the adjacent Tilly Mill Intersection Project. There's a shared use path proposed on the north side of the road and an on-street bicycle lane on the south side for the eastbound direction of travel. And a sidewalk would be added on the south side of the road, which along with the Tilly Mill Intersection Project would complete the sidewalk on both sides of Mount Vernon Road all the way through the city. In addition to the bicycle and pedestrian improvements, alternative one adds a left turn lane. Zoom in here. Left turn lane added at Vernon Lake Drive and at Stratham Drive. And then at Meadow Lake Drive. There would be a short center turn lane with a refuge island for the pedestrian crossing between Vernon Lake Drive and Stratham Drive. The refuge island is designed to slow the traffic down and give pedestrians a safe place to wait. If the, to make sure drivers see them and both, and stop in both directions. The existing westbound auxiliary right turn lane at Forest Springs would be and this alternative would be shortened to a shorter right turn lane. Looking at alternative two, the primary difference between this alternative and alternative one is that the existing interior, the existing three lanes there at Forest Springs, you've got two lanes going in the westbound direction currently. The innermost lane would become a, a center turn lane. And the outer lane would become the through lane. And what that would do is provide, in addition to the left turn lanes at the, at the side streets, that would provide a, a left turn area for the residential driveways along that section. Alternative three. It was, this was primarily developed to see what the impacts would be if the roadway and curb were left as they are today. And just said, keep the roadway the way it is, but we want to add the bike and pedestrian improvements. So that all that would occur outside of the existing curb line on the shoulders, the shoulders would be widened to accommodate that. This, though this alternative does provide accommodations for the bicycles and pedestrians, it doesn't provide as much opportunity to add the enhanced refuge islands at the crosswalk locations, since the existing lanes would remain as they are today. So look, this is, look at, if you look at it at ground level, this is looking west near Meadow Lake Drive. The three alternatives side by side give a very similar look and overall feel of the corridor. Just looking at alternative one and alternative two, the, the only difference there is that, that the turn lane does not continue, it tapers back down and then widens back out down by Stratham Drive. Comparing the pros and cons of each, again, the only real difference between one and two is the, the added left turn lane for the driveways between Forest Springs and Meadow Lake. Alternative three doesn't include any turn lanes, any left turn lanes and requires a few less easements and right of way. It's too early in the design really to develop a realistic cost estimate. But I would guess that there wouldn't be a wide range of difference in cost of the three alternatives. Alternative one is probably going to may cost a little more because you, you're going to move some of the curb line around compared to alternative two. Alternative three may be a little less because you wouldn't be changing the curb as much. But you'd still be doing a lot of work on the shoulders. So the cost is not going to have, is not going to be a big variable here. In October of last year, the city hosted a virtual public meeting and we're continuing to get really good response to this, the online format. We hosted on the city's website with a video explaining the project along with concept, the concept drawings and an online comment form. We received over 300 comments with over 230 of those expressing support for improving safety and accommodations for all the roadway users. We asked some, in addition to the general comments, we asked some specific questions about the project. One question we asked was to rank the priority of improvements that are needed on the corridor. And about 50% of the responses ranked left turn lanes in the top two priorities for the corridor and about 40% ranked sidewalk on the south side of the road as a top two priority. Bicycle accommodations, better pedestrian crossings and a better sidewalk on the north side of the road, all ranked comparably. And then finally, we asked, you know, the overall impression of the alternatives. Options one and two received strong support with two-thirds of the responses either supporting or partially supporting one of those alternatives. And then about two-thirds of the responses were either neutral or not supportive of, of alternative three. So based on the technical app review and the public input received, that either alternative one or two or some variation thereof could, can be designed to meet the, the needs of this corridor. And I'll stop there and answer questions and
Okay.
Feedback.
All right, you're gonna, you may need to leave it up in case people have questions. So I'm just gonna start with Jim because I can see his hand.
I've got a question on alternative one. This wasn't explicit, but in looking at the the diagram or the, you know, the high level proposed plan, it looks like there's a triangle in the middle of Forest Springs. Would that be a right turn only out of Forest Springs?
Yes, the, well, and the, and the version that got included in the agenda that was in there in my presentation, that, that's an older version of the concept. That was something that was originally drawn in and we took it out. So if I go back, I don't know if you can still see my screen, but.
Oh, it doesn't look like it has that, yeah.
Yeah, that was a mistake.
What I'm looking at in the packet is a little bit different than what's here. And I, I was just going to say that left turn, right turn only out of Forest Springs is just a real non-starter for me. There's you know.
Yeah, we said the same thing.
Okay.
It's an older version, they ended up in the packet.
Gotcha, okay. All right.
Is that it Jim? Is that your only question?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that was the only question I had.
Pam, do you have anything? Okay. John?
Yeah, Michael, taking a look at 1B where there's left-hand turn lanes, but not the endless suicide lanes, which I'm not a fan of. I'm sure there's inappropriate calling those. Is there anything that's blocking any of the residents' driveways when it comes to going in or out of the individual driveways? Like, see the green right there to the left of Stratham right there? Is there a driveway there that somebody could not get across?
Yeah, the way that's drawn, it looks like it's a little too long there. We, we'd have to shorten that up, that driveway. We would, that's something we look at in the final design. We, we wanted to try to add some land state medium where we could, you know, both to kind of narrow the feel of the roadway and to, you know, make it look nice. But I think that one would need to be shortened. And then on, on alternative two, I think it on alternative two, I think it is, we would probably look at, you know, if you did have some of this turn lane here, we would probably look at where you could break that up with some of that land state median so that it wasn't continuous where you didn't. There's probably some short sections in there where you could put it in without blocking access to somebody's driveway. But we would not, we would not prevent people from being able to turn left and then out of the driveways.
Okay, and then as far as the north side, if we had the multi-use trail, there would be no bike lane, is that correct?
The, not on that side, right. We added one on the south side after the public meeting based on the direction we're going on the Tilly Mill project and based on some of the public input. We went back to the concepts and so we do have one on the south side of the road, but not the north side.
One of the thinking for bike lanes, besides serving the community for bicycling, was also that our vehicles could, in the time of emergency, everybody could pull to the right whereby emergency vehicles could go down the center of the road. What would the width be for emergency vehicles in that realm if there's no bike lane? Is there, I guess, depending on where the landscape strips are in the middle, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not choking emergency services.
Yeah, we usually try to allow 13 to 14 feet for that. If you've got, if you've got a median, you know, that, each side of that median probably needs to be about 14 feet to be able to have, and you could make the median have a mountable curb.
Right.
So that they could go partially up on it if they needed to. But, yeah, we would consider that and make sure we have enough for that.
Yeah, again, just not impacting the public safety aspect. I have, I have no other questions. I think I'm good. On mute, Lynn.
Stacy, do you have anything? Any questions?
No, I'm still just kind of absorbing and listening to Michael's presentation. So I might have one later.
Okay, Tom, Amber.
Yes, thank you. I got, I got a few things. I just, I just like to start with just a, just a general comment on this. I mean, I really think this is an important corridor for us and this is an important project for the city. You know, I think we have, you know, the Ashford-Domody commuter trail is real important and you kind of consider that maybe our commercial main street. And I kind of consider Mount Vernon to be our residential main street, for lack of a better term. And, you know, what we do here is very important because this is the major east-west connector for our city. You know, it lends itself well to a multi-use trail just because it's, it's on a ridgeline, so it's relatively flat and straight. Makes it easy for people to walk and bike of all ability levels. It's, it's services multiple schools, so it's a walking and biking route for kids going to school as well as it's our parade route. So let's not forget about that and making it an attractive and inviting place for people to participate and watch the parades. So, you know, you know, obviously it'd be great that we could do things all over the city, but, you know, given our limited resources, we need to prioritize. And for me, this would be right at the top of the list, this project. So I'll just start with that comment. Getting into a couple of the specifics, I have a question about the easternmost pedestrian crossing down by Mount Vernon Place. It appears to be away from the intersection and I think that may be because of, of the way, if you were heading eastbound on Mount Vernon, the road kind of merges in, kind of forks into Mount Vernon Place. And I imagine that placement is to allow it to be outside of that turning area. My concern is having it where it's located. It appears to be a dangerous location for a crossing because it's kind of away from the intersection and that's kind of a crazy intersection anyway. I know we've talked about plans to perhaps in the future make that intersection more perpendicular and make it more safer for vehicles and, you know, non-motorized traffic. So my question is, would it be more appropriate to perhaps move that, that crossing down to Meadow Lake where it's at an actual intersection and it's, I, what are your thoughts on that? As far as the, I guess that's from Michael, the placement of that particular pedestrian crossing.
I think we need to look at that pretty closely because, and really try to understand where people are going to want to go to and from. I don't disagree Meadow Lake might be a better location. And there, the way, at least this alternative one that I have up here, the way it is, it would be pretty easy to have that on the west side of the intersection. But, you know, Mount Vernon Place potentially could be kind of a through walking route. But I think the primary consideration here would probably be the walking route to the school, which maybe Meadow Lake would be a better location for that. I think there's, there's some flexibility in where we put that crossing. I think we just need to really look at that closely.
Yeah, and I agree. And that was my thought process exactly, that a lot of the, the crossing is school-related and moving into that intersection and obviously make it more convenient to get to the school, but also safer. I just think that Mount Vernon Place is a, is a dangerous place to have people try to, it's already a dangerous intersection as far as people looking in 30 different directions and, and putting in a pedestrian crossing there might not be the best spot. I also have questions. I know, you know, I have concerns about the, about the turn lanes that we're putting in here. We all hate traffic and we all want to do things to reduce traffic and make our rides a little bit smoother and a little bit easier and a little less in time, you know, in length of time. My concern is the old, you know, saying, if you build it, they will come. And if we make it too easy to pass to the city that we're just encouraging more cut-through traffic through the area, you know, it might not be fun or popular to say, but sometimes traffic does do the job of slowing people down and making the roads a little bit safer. And if we turn this into, you know, it has, you know, highway in the name, you know, we don't want to make it Mount Vernon Highway. We don't want it to be cars zooming through this area, especially if we're adding all of this pedestrian and bicycle amenities. We want it to remain safe. And, you know, if we're widening the amount of asphalt that people need to cross and if we're creating situations that'll allow traffic to travel faster, and I'm talking about their speed, not necessarily throughput, those would be my concerns with the turn lanes, you know, and especially just the two-way left turn lanes. I mean, I think there's only a total of three houses there. So we're basically putting in a big section of two-way turn to accommodate three driveways into private residences. So that, you know, I know that might just be because of the, you know, the turn radiuses as far as where the other things are and, you know, you can't shorten the road and widen it again. But I just have concerns about that and hopefully we could perhaps come up with something a little better there for that. And then, and then just a final comment, again, because this is just a, in my mind, an important street for the city, I would like to see, you know, in that buffer strip on the, on the north side, hopefully if we could make this, like I said, like a true main street type of thing where we could put some trees in there, not only for aesthetics, but also they act as a buffer for, for the people using that trail and the safety factor. So hopefully that's something we could like at trees and perhaps more pedestrian and bicycle scaled, you know, street lamps as opposed to the big pole-mounted street lights. I know that adds cost, but I'd like to at least, you know, consider those options and see what it would mean. Because like I said, if there's one spot, we should, we should focus the resources. I think this is, this is one of them. So that's all I have for now. I know we have budget issues to talk about. You know, we discussed those earlier and, and I know we have more discussion on that as far as where this fits in the capital improvement plan and what our funding options are, and that'll be a big part of that as well. So, but Michael, thank you for the presentation and your work on this and that's all I have right now. Thanks.
I think Joe.
Thanks. So, yeah, Michael, thank you for doing this. Could I, could I just have a couple of, I've got some generic comments at the beginning, but, you know, out to the greater public, you know, people want to see things happen today. They want to see things happen yesterday. They're frustrated and everything. You know, when I was running for council, I said, you know, I think we should live in a city that it's safe for every child to walk or ride their bikes to safely to school and for aging in place and so on. And just to the greater public, let them know, sometimes I wish we were like a Rome, Georgia or a Macon or an Augusta or Columbus. Why? Because they have a bunch of existing pavement and concrete and existing right-of-way where all they have to do is move some stuff around and they don't have to rip out utilities and buy any easements and right-of-ways. And all of a sudden they can just go in their downtowns where it's six lanes wide and then go in and do things. So we have much greater constraints here in Dunwoody because we have an existing built and we have to move and build and redo things to incorporate these facilities, right? So just please remember, greater public, when you're looking at what you want to see today, we don't have a Buford Highway running through Dunwoody that we can mess around with. So I just wanted to say that. Also, a little bit like what Tom said, when you design for cars, you're going to get cars. When you design a city for people, you're going to get people. I will challenge going up against any GDOT standards at all for anything we do in Dunwoody and, and find a PE or someone else that says, you know what? We can just find a different standard and we don't need to apply throughput mechanisms and we can focus on the, on the people that live there rather than helping somebody get, get somewhere five or 10 minutes earlier to their destination for a few days a week for certain days of the week, certain times of the year. So I can be corrected on this, but legally, I'm, I'm pretty sure we do not have to follow GDOT policy that we can design our streets for our cities. I believe that safety should be the number one overarching priority, focusing on traffic calming, slowing speeds, improving pedestrian and bicycle facilities, sporting safe routes to school for Vanderlin and for the people living along Mount Vernon versus helping those motor vehicle operators getting their destination. So I'd like to challenge and ask Michael what we can do today. I know there's, there's the project. Okay, that's, that's a full break. It's kind of like when I talked to Brent Walker about the park of our perimeter center east. Here's the full project. What can we do in the interim short-term? Well, what can we do today instead of five or six years from now to affect change and make that corridor safer? And I would like to propose eliminating that quarter-mile-long westbound D cell right-turn lane and converting it into a multi-use area. Put in a cement barrier separating the motor vehicles. It could be flower boxes and so on, spaced every 10 feet or so. Pushing out the Forest Springs turn so that you can have greater visibility, turning onto Mount Vernon, making it easier to see that and so on. So, Michael, just before I get into the nuances of the project, what's to prevent us from eliminating that D cell lane and putting in some kind of buffer and turning it into a multi-use area in the, in the next months versus waiting four or five years for this project to be built?
Well, first, let me, let me just clarify one or two things here. That the, the GDOT threshold that I presented earlier, it's, it's not a mandatory requirement on the city. It's a, it's a recommended guideline. So, so yes, we don't, we don't have to follow that. That just kind of gives you a context of where, at what point turn lanes should be considered. And, and the turn, the purpose of the turn lanes we're proposing here is not really to to increase the throughput on this corridor. It's really just to increase the safety at some of these intersections to, you know, reduce, potentially reduce the rear-end collision. So we're not, we're not looking to push more traffic through here. We're just looking to, you know, address some of those like Vernon, Vernon Lake Drive where we seem to be having a lot of injury crashes with the number of crashes we have there. To answer your question about, you know, what we can do now, I mean, I mean, you could go out there with some striping and, you know, change the configuration of the roadways. When you start talking about putting in concrete planters or something like that, I mean, you really start getting into having to do some more substantial improvements to make it safe. I mean, I would be concerned about, you know, sticking big concrete boxes in a roadway that, that somebody could, you know, a car could run into. You know, there's some safety considerations there with a, you know, big fixed object in the roadway. And that's why when you see the Jersey barriers that they use in construction sites, they, they're, they have a lift at the bottom of them that keeps cars from really being able to run into them severely. So, so I think once you start talking about putting things like that in the roadway, you start, you're going to start spending more money. The only way you could really do something on the cheap is to do it with some striking on the roadway, probably.
Well, I'll, I'll still kind of look at that. You know, it's like over on, is it over in Redfield? Is that Shambly Dunwoody? Yeah. When we created that pedestrian crossing island there. And, you know, guess what happened when we first put it in? You saw a bunch of tire tracks on the, same with North Peachtree and Kingsley, right? So, yeah, there is some adjustment because people have to start, stop distracted driving and people will look up around them. And so if we have the built-in environment a little bit closer and they have to kind of look up. And, yeah, I appreciate our chief Grogan and our force out there enforcing the hands-free. But, you know, I've been hit by a car and there was nothing between me and the car and I just got hit by a car on my bike riding. So maybe they get to hit a cement thing and they wake up instead of hitting a person on a bike. So I'll, I'll still want to challenge that of doing something in the short-term if, if and when we move forward with whatever project. I just want to look at that as a separate thing. I don't want to take up too much more time. And then I'm going to try to do a little bit kind of semi, I'm going to just share this because this, could I, could you just stop share for a second? I'm just going to share, picture speaks a thousand words. Thanks, Michael. I sent it to the, you know, email staff, but, you know, if you see, share, 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 which screen am I sharing? Oops. Do you see the Mount Vernon corners place there? Map? Share.
Don't we see it?
Yeah, so, you know, I, basically if you took that 67, 69 feet or so, there's a, there's a great left-to-right thing and what, what could you do with that if we didn't do center lanes? And this was just that concept idea where, you know, I know about the, I've read about the curb cuts and collisions occur at curb cuts. And if you got that side path, and I love the idea of that 12-foot-wide multi-use path, but we know that collisions occur when you're riding, when you're going in the opposite direction of traffic where if I'm a driver coming out of a turn of a road, I'm going to look, if I'm going to turn right, which way am I looking? I'm looking to the left. I'm not looking to the right. So if you're, you're a pedestrian, you've got a chance to look. But if you're going both directions, you know, conflict zones, collisions occur if you're going in the opposite direction. So I know that that facility, you layer on the context, context sensitive. So, you know, there's just a different options here of what we could do with that, that, that width right of way. Putting in a nice wide sidewalk, of having these bike facilities where they're going in the same direction as traffic with a buffer. And then we've got, got that for the more casual users. That was just the full art possible. And notice that we have the landscape buffer between the motorists and the pedestrians. So you notice the trees and so on, instead of just grass there right against the road because, you know, it gets pretty hot up there. I'd love to see that along, like a boulevard all the way along that, along Mount Vernon. But, you know, I've, I've sent this in an email. I've got that in there and, and folks. So I'm just leaving that as my feedback at there. I don't, we don't need to go each one of those points, but I really, I definitely want to see something change on Mount Vernon and I really think we're going to do something good at the end of the day and it's going to make it more friendly and better for folks that live here to get to places for all ages. So, yeah, that was just my concern, I consider, comments. And I'd just like to know what the next steps would be generally in the process and when we hear back on something else, so.
Now, Michael, what is it that you're looking for from us tonight?
Some general direction on, you know, where the design for this project. I mean, what I'm, what I think I'm hearing is there's not really a lot of support for alternative two with the continuous turn lane all the way through. It's, it's, you know, the bike and pedestrian improvements seems to be support for that. I guess on alternative one, if we looked at just turn lanes at certain intersections, that really the direction the council wants to go in.
Stacy, do you have your hand up or no?
Yeah, and going with that, Michael, on the, on the right-of-way with the three different options, is it a temporary right-of-way easement or do we actually have to go into, onto people's property?
There's, for There's, uh, for alternative one and two, that's a, there's five. Properties where we would need like a sliver of right of way, you know, several feet along the existing right of way. To be able to keep the new sidewalk and bike path. In the right of way, we would need a little bit of actual additional right of way. Then the rest of it, um, 20 or so, 21. The temporary easements would be just to build the project and then it would, they would go away.
And then with the, with the left-hand turn lanes and, and I understand about the, the accidents on the, at those intersections. Do we? When you look at the accident rate, do we look at what the accidents are? Meaning is it people just not paying attention, rear-ending each other? Is it left-hand turn accidents? Like, do we look at that?
We do. I don't have that here in front of me, but usually when you. When we look at it, we look, you know, you might have a number of accidents, but you look at the one, we really focus on the ones that could be correctable. With improvements in this case. It would primarily be rear end collisions that you would look at and say, okay, if somebody had a left turn lane. You know, they're less likely to get rear-ended. Um, I can go back and get that data, but that, we do look at that.
Okay. Um, and there's no stoplights being added, correct? It's just a left-hand turn lanes to make it safer for people turning left.
Right, right. I mean, I, there, none, none of these, I would say have a, a. An accident problem that just really dr- jumps out at you, uh, as a, a real. Systemic problem, but I mean, I do think the Vernon Lake particularly. Had higher than the others and the injury rate was pretty, pretty high. And the fact that a couple of people mentioned it in their comments, there does seem to be something with that intersection that. Is a little more unusual than the rest of the corridor.
Gotcha. And I guess I kind of echo Tom's sentiments on, you know. This is a cornerstone, you know. Straight in our, in our city and I, I like the multi-use path and. I, I mean, to me it's, this should be a priority as well. But, um, I'm done Lynn, thank you.
Um, so a couple of things. Oh, Pam, go ahead. I knew I saw you.
After some, after hearing some of the comments, I just wanted to, um, not have a question, but to say, um, thank you to Michael for pointing out that. Yes, the multi paths, yes, 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 yes. But the turn lanes are so important. Because I go up and down Mount Vernon a lot and not all these accidents might not be accidents. As, um, recorded, but what I see, the near misses, the anger, the going around people, the near misses. Holy cow. It's like, it's mess. And so these will help that situation. I don't see it really bringing more cars. These are for the citizens that live here. And, um, and for them to go up and down Mount Vernon safely. And I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
And Lynn, if I can make a quick comment.
Absolutely, Jim.
You know, on, um, Vernon Lake, you know, and I, I don't know where your traffic counts came from. I was surprised that Vernon Lake and Forest Spring turned out so even. Because Vernon Lake, I perceive to have higher traffic because it's a cut through. People use that to cut through from Mount Vernon all the way over to Dunwoody Club. You know, there, there, there are our friends from Sandy Springs I know who cut through the neighborhood. You know, to get from, you know, the vicinity of the country club, those first couple of streets west and, and cut through to get over to Mount Vernon and the village through there. So it's, you know, there, there's a lot of cut through traffic on, on Vernon Lakes that doesn't exist on Forest Springs. And that's probably part of the reason why that, um, has the higher accident counts is there's a, there's actually a little bit more traffic there because of that cut through nature. And, and the other thing that happens is that. You know, that cutting through, you know, people stop, you know, make that left and that slows down the traffic. And it doesn't have a chance to get sped up again before it gets to Forest Springs. So it kind of makes that Forest Spring intersection a little bit more safer because the traffic has been calmed. By the left turn there at, um, at Vernon Lake. So just some comments on that detail. But, but, you know, s- second to Tom on, uh. You know, if we can dress up Mount Vernon a little bit with, with the nicer poles, that would be a good thing, I think. And, and, and also, uh, second to John on, yeah, no, no, no continuous. Center turn lane. I think that's just not a, a good idea at all. So thanks.
Anybody else? So a couple of thoughts. One is that. And I guess it's, it's sort of a public works road project question con, laundry. You know, we just had this presentation from, uh, the PCID and Perimeter Connects. And one of the things that is clear is at least the intention for not everyone to go to the office every day. Once we leave the pandemic and we don't really know exactly what impact that's going to have on traffic. I know that in speaking with some people, there, there's some hope that we'll see some relief from just fewer cars making the trip every day. But we're a while away from knowing that. And also, um, I think they've, everyone's spoken well about the turn lane and certainly the non, nobody supports a long turn lane. But what is our timeline? Because I, I don't think we gave, I'm not sure we're ready for the next presentation to be when we make final decisions. Given the scope of this project. And so what is your timeline?
Well, we, I mean, we have, based on the capital work program, this project wouldn't be funded for construction for several years. We do have. We do have the design funded. So.
Right.
You know, we can, we can, I mean, if we want to table this, we can table it. If we want.
I don't think we need to table it. I think we just, you know, need to revisit it and continue to. To, to make progress towards something we're comfortable with. And, you know, as it, as it fits in your workflow, I think is one of the things. And, and I think that like Tom talked about the aesthetics, but, and, and I totally agree. It, it would be interesting for us to understand, and maybe you do already, maybe it was in that presentation, it's clearly spelled out. You know, what right of way impediments are we facing? Like. How large they are, how impass, you know, how unsolvable they are. And you know, I'm a believer that you can have a multipurpose trail that narrows in places. And it's, is as wide as you want in other places where it's practical. But, you know, what does that look like? And it, and can we, through the commercial core of Mount Vernon, have a product that, that respects that it's a commercial core? And then have something that's softened for the residential portion of Mount Vernon that we're talking about. And so those are, you know, I'm concerned about the aesthetics. But I think we almost need, while the project kit, like the trail or the sidewalks can be contiguous, that there may need different features. Continuous, not contiguous, but anyhow, but. I don't know if you want to take some of what we've said today and come back. With fewer options or more options or. Spend the time, you know, it would be nice, and maybe you already know this, if there's definitely definite impediments that will keep a project from being able to happen. You know, maybe that we need to know that.
Yeah, I, I don't know that now, but I think if we do some more work on it, we can start to identify those. So, um. Right now, we, we only have the consultant under a contract for, um, for these concepts.
Okay, yeah.
We could, we can either, you know, go back to them and, and gi- give them a little more money to refine it. Or we could go ahead and put out an RFP for, for final design now that we. We didn't want to do that originally because we didn't really know where, you know, what direction we were going to take. But I think we, we probably know enough now about what the project's going to look like that we could do that. Have somebody do some more work and then come back with some more detail. Later this year.
So I'm, just to be clear, I'm with that we don't have to make it necessarily easier for commuters. In fact, we shouldn't be making it easier for commuters. Traffic picks the path of least resistance in the next few years. They're going to put a big interstate project. We don't want people cutting through to get to the access points. We want people to stay on Peachtree Industrial and use, you know, we're working with G dot to encourage them to put an access point there. So, um, but yes, so I guess internally y'all figure out what next steps is and just let us know.
Okay, I guess, yeah, the only thing I'm, I'm not sure about directional, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing. Some thoughts of maybe no turn lanes at all and some, some turn lanes that I'm just.
Yeah, I don't think we have consensus, I hate to tell you. So I think some people say no turn lanes. And, but not, but some people say some turn lanes. So I think you just have to work. I mean, we just maybe need two plans. I don't know, or, or, or get maybe a future, maybe a folk, a discussion focused on just the turn lane aspect or something. I don't know what you think would be most helpful or how to solve that because, um, you know, we're not going to solve it tonight.
Yeah. Maybe we'll go look at a alternative one C or something that might be different from one B.
Right. So, um, but yes, because we do have some, you know, we have an obligation to the homeowners and. It's well to weigh, we have to weigh their needs. And, and again, though, I think. That rather than put a lot of energy into a plan that because of right of way. In a bill, you know, the inability to purchase right of way, the cost of the right of way, utility, pole movements, whatever it is. That we know that before we go down a path that will just leave us either price us out of the project. Cause too much controversy with residents or make it impossible to proceed. So I, I think we probably need, you know, some information on that as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael. And I think you're on for the next step. Carl Thomas is on.
Yeah, he, I'm make sure he's.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. All right, Mr. Thomas, we're ready for you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This particular project is pretty straightforward, but considering that barring an emergency repair is probably going to be the priciest. Uh, for this particular budget year, just wanted to, you know, present it in discussion items and make sure that you guys didn't have any questions. This is for a storm system repair at, uh, 1493 Old Spring House Lane. Um, it involves a repair and replacement of approximately 750 linear feet of pipe. And seven, uh, manholes or catch basins. Pull up my screen. So, um, beginning research of this particular project, uh, there were two. There's two observable imminent failures, uh, one on the downstream end, uh, down here near 1493 and the other one at the upstream end at 1532. The final plat, um, is dated from 1961 and back then, um, I guess it wasn't required to have much detail. Only thing it shows is two pipes in the right of way and everything else is just an open conveyance. And that's significantly different than what we see, see right now. The initial, um, survey by our contractors, um, showed, um. Thirty-six inch pipe at the outlet end at 1493 going underneath the driveway. There's a slight separation. And, um, the, the, the pipes minimally functional at the downstream end. Both of the manholes going under Georgetown Court. Um, there was a method, uh, design method at the time, uh, we call it doghouse. And basically they cut the, um, crown of the tops of the pipes out and installed a brick manhole on top. This particular method, needless to say, is not very structurally sound and you have a lot of issues with infiltration. Because there's no way you can sufficiently grow out these structures around the top. This particular pipe runs through three properties and then goes again under Old Spring House Lane. These particular structures, again, that, that, that's the, um, inverts, the crowns cut out at the top. Brick manholes that, um, installed on top of them. And the original, um, survey showed a pipe running. To the front yard at 1532 and then running out at 1542. Uh, the city's extent of service. Typically, we would normally stop right here. But after we actually got the CCTV robotic crawlers in there, we were actually able to observe multiple buried manholes. Particularly in this yard right here, there was one, um, right here in the corner along this property line. And then a second one right here on the, on the, on the adjacent property line between 1532 and 1542. So we had to kind of come up with a different plan of action than what we originally thought. Because the structures aren't where we projected them to be during the virtual assessment. Um, when the, um, storm surveyors made their, um, initial inspections. Um, once we got the crawlers in there, we were actually able to survey the whole system. We were able to see significant corrosion in the inverts of the pipes. You able to see multiple instances of deformities where. Obviously the footing around the structure when the pipe was installed was insufficient. So the weight on the top of the pipes is just basically causing it to partially collapse. And then this is an example of one of the, what we call doghouse and where they actually cut the tops of the pipe. And actually ran one long pipe underneath the road and just installed the brick manholes around them. And you can kind of see this is just structurally unsound when you get a heavy rain, the water's going to start seeping around the sides of the structures. So, um, after meeting with multiple contractors on this particular project, we came with a plan of action. Because the, because of the failures underneath both driveways is to replace this entire line. Um, along Old Spring House and Georgetown Court, all the way to this structure line between these three properties. And then replace the infrastructure underneath those spring house lane. The existing system, after we performed the CCTV work, we found this bare structure, as I mentioned earlier, right here. And then this additional manhole right here, because we didn't want to tear up the residence entire front yard. A typical plan of action is to go with a trenchless repair. Once we get out of the right of way if possible, but this particular pipe in, in particular is in the worst shape of all of them. So plan of action is just to basically take this system offline. Not quite sure if initially when this was installed, if, if there was a plan to allow some drainage to come right here from this west side property line. Because there was when we got the crawl in there, there was a great inlet that was buried on top of it. So maybe the original plan when these properties were built was to capture some additional runoff here. But maybe once they built the homes, they rerouted it into another location. So this particular line, the way it's set up right here is really kind of pointless. We don't really need this additional structure, these additional assets. So we're going to basically fill these, stabilize these structures with flammable field, take them offline completely. And when we build this new, replace this brick man, manhole right here and install the precast concrete manhole. We're going to run an RCP diagonally along here, replace it with another manhole and then line this last pipe going upstream. And, um. Replacing the whole system at one time is a significant saving in cost. I guess if you typically get an invoice, you could probably, if you replay, replace. A portion of the line or phase it out and, you know, replace, you know, sections of this system at, you know, different, different periods. It appears that you're saving costs, but by repairing this entire system at one time, you're only paying one mobilization cost. So just because we're, we're repairing 15 assets at one time, we're saving over $30,000 just in mobilization costs. Hauling material that, that there's a saving in that as well. So just repairing the entire line and restoring it at, at, at once is the most economical solution. Even though it's a pricier, uh, project by doing it all at, in one setting. The cost, estimated cost plus, uh, 10% contingency is 307,675 dollars and 50 cents. Again, um, we had, um. Two contractors, um, IPR and Southern Premier Contractor bid on the project. IPR specializes more in trenchless repair. So their initial plan didn't. Didn't involve replacing these structures in the right of way. But based on that old design method of cutting the tops of the pipe and installing the brick manholes on top of it. Our, our, our thinking was especially since this road hasn't been paved yet, is to just go ahead and dig that out and replace it with, you know. Up to date materials and RCP underneath the roads. So it's a little bit more expensive, about $20,000 more expensive to dig and replace these two structures underneath the roads right here. But, um, as I mentioned before, uh, the overall cost of the project is significantly cheaper due to savings in mobilization and hauling material costs. And I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Thank you. Questions, comments? Um, Jim, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, this is, this is why we do the robot pictures and try to get this stuff with, um, you know, the, the cured-in-place pipe, you know, and make, make a repair, you know, a long-term repair with the cured-in-place pipe. So you don't have to dig up the road and don't have to replace it all. But this thing was just too old, too gnarly, you know, too, too much bad stuff, too much way rusted-out corrugated metal pipe. And, and then on top of that, the, the, the bad, um, design with those, uh, um, brick manholes added on to a cutout pipe. And I, you know, I, it is what it is, you know, this, hopefully we don't have too many of these left out there. But this is one of the oldest parts of the city and, you know, I'm not surprised that there's stuff like this, you know, in that area. Comments on the whole thing, I, you know, full speed ahead.
Unmute it. Anybody else? Joe?
So Carl, nothing personal, I, I, I join City Council for this kind of stuff, yes. Um, FYI, as a discretion, you may want to start the meeting with, anybody have any questions up or down? And then you give your presentation, I, I'll leave it at that, but anyway, it's great. Um, I do want to ask about the budget, the funding. So in a procedural process, just from a accountability, I see it's coming from the twenty twenty-one budget. But do we know, like, what's the drawdown, what's the balance left? I mean, this is, it's accounted for, right, Carl?
Right.
So, yeah, that's all, that's all, do we, are we, was, was this, pardon me for not looking, but was this a line item? This existing project already in our budget, was it just the amount, it's just coming out of a bucket?
Well, um, the current operations and maintenance budget for storm waters, uh, this, for the twenty twenty-one budget is one point six million. So, um, you know, just the projects that we have scheduled for the twenty twenty-one budget, this is one of the ones that we actually had on the docket for last year. But due to COVID, um, you know, we, we trimmed the budget down ten percent and we didn't want to have that chunk of money coming out because, I mean, we, we always, I mean, I, I typically always like to leave about fifteen to twenty percent just in reserved open because every year, once, once you get to the summertime, you're going to get some big rain, some sort of imminent failure and you're going to have a number of emergency repairs in that third, fourth quarter. So we always leave just an open amount of funding just in case because every year there's always an emergency.
Okay, so we gotta, we got, we got cash in the bank, that's good. And this is, and a technicality for this is a fee versus a tax, right? So it's just a flat number, so it's not based on the valuation of the properties. Everybody pays the same flat rate into the stormwater fund?
That's, that, that, that's correct, it's a seventy-eight, forty-five. It, it fluctuates based on the municipal cost index. So if it goes up a few percentage points, then it will automatically bump up slightly based on what the difference is in municipal cost index. But yes, it is a flat rate for each residential property and for commercial properties. It is based on the impervious units on that particular property.
I, I, you know, even now we, I appreciate that even more, the way that funding formula is derived because it's, it's not prone to these economic fluctuations of what's happening and we're able to keep that infrastructure maintained. So, um, hats off to, uh, the, the, the authors of that funding formula and thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Further questions, thanks.
Tom?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Carl. I just have a question, um, regarding the rest of this line going in the opposite direction. If you're, if you're looking at the, at the map going from right to left, just being familiar with the topography, I know it's downhill in that direction. And I, I believe we're only about, what about, maybe three houses away from Old Georgetown Trail and on the other side is, is Nancy Creek. So do these, these, do these drain directly into Nancy Creek?
Yes.
And, and since we're that close to, I, I, I would imagine, but it's more out of curiosity, you guys inspected the remainder of the line beyond where the project stops in that person's front yard and everything going. Are there any concerns for a few, that we might have to get in in the future and, and repair the rest of that line to the creek? Or is that pretty stable right now?
Well, this, this particular system, this is the entire system. Once it daylights at the end of this pipe to, to the west, um, you know, because the system's so long, I had to kind of create a unique-looking map, but it's just an open conveyance down here. I could pull it up, but what I'll do is I, I'll forward you a map so you can actually see the, the, the entire system as it flows and it's, there, there's an, there's an intermittent stream that runs down here.
It's daylight there then?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right, gotcha. I just wanted to make sure that we're doing all this work and there wasn't maybe a small stretch that, you know, might fail us in the near future and if it was, you know, just better to bite the bullet. Now, I, I'm sure you guys had looked into it, but I just, I'd ask out of curiosity, so thanks, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Speak up if you have questions, okay, I hear none. Carl, thank you very much for this. Have you started talking to the homeowners?
Yes, we, we, we've got all the easements signed already.
Okay, great. I know that often the homeowners welcome these projects because what lurks beneath? And, you know, this is, this is why we took this from the county, right? Instead of leaving it with the county because we knew we would handle the money responsibly and get the projects done. So thank you for, I'm showing this. If you'll unshare your screen for me so I can ask Council a question, is everybody okay with consent for this? Yeah, okay, all right. And you'll be putting this, this will be a business item, correct? Carl?
Yeah, I can put it on the consent agenda.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Public comments? Oh, my video is off, I'm sorry. Public comments, Ginger?
If I do show a hand raised, Emily Ritzler. You should be able to unmute, you have three minutes.
Hi, yes, I'm Emily Ritzler and I live on Stratham Drive. And I wanted to comment on the Mount Vernon Road project. So we're actually two doors down from Mount Vernon Road, so this is a very important to us. So I just wanted to note that the sidewalk on the south side of the project, I think, is really important in helping pedestrians not just cross, across Mount Vernon, but get to intersections that are actually signed and lit for pedestrian crossings. And I think it was, excuse me, I'm looking at my notes. Councilwoman Talmadge mentioned the near misses. I think that's a really important piece to understand about how traffic works. The proximity of Vernon Lake Drive, Stratham Drive and Forest Springs Drive, they're all very close with a lot of movements happening there. And so we support the left turn lanes at those areas to help with the traffic conditions. We watch it every day and, and it's very, very scary that there are not more accidents than have been reported. So I wanted to note that. And we would support moving into final design so we could have a better understanding of what the overall cost and true impacts would be moving forward to make some more informed decisions about the project. And we are generally supportive of alternative too. So, but we do think the left turn lanes are really important to help with predictability of the drivers along the corridor.
Thank you. Ginger, anybody else?
If you would like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom app. There are no more hands raised at this time.
And it doesn't look like there's anybody downstairs, so, or in the city hall chamber. So I'm going to close public comment. City manager comments?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be sending out the report shortly. And let me hit a few highlights from the bi-weekly report for this week. The, the Peeler Road sidewalk, construction fifty-seven has completed the second retaining wall. So when you go, when you go down there and take a look, you'll see that construction is progressing. Same at Shambly, Dunwoody, and Spalding intersection. That work is coming along nicely at this point. Construction fifty-seven completed the, the first hundred and thirty feet of curb and sidewalk works from Coronation Drive. So hopefully we'll have some decent weather for that to keep working. In the police department, um, when you read through that report, you'll see several different arrests from, um, everything from a speeder to broken into vehicles. The police are doing a very good job on catching these, people who do these crimes. For parks, Brook Run Skate Park, the murals are up now for Black History Month. And we also have murals for March will have be for Women's History Month. So if you get a chance to go by there and take a look, they are, they are up at this point. The, um, we also completed our monthly dog maintenance, dog park maintenance repairs. And we also received approval from the Georgia Soil and Water about our Austin demolition land disturbance permit, so we can go ahead and remove the foundation of that property. That's why the equipment's been sitting there and the building's been down for a little bit. But we were waiting on that permit for the land disturbance aspect of the demolition. The, uh, the department assessed and ordered turf for areas of Brook Run Park, baseball fields that need to be patched and replaced. So that's a, we do want to protect that asset and can, and keep up with all the maintenance on that type of field. The, um, and just as a note, and this is something that I've mentioned in the past, but the staff continues twice a day disinfection of all playgrounds and also the after-hours cleaning of the bathrooms at our facilities. So just want to let the public know that that's continuing. Community development has been active with two hundred and sixty-two building inspections over the past two weeks. Also fifty-five new permits and twenty-three inspections by the city engineer for erosion control. And we also have code enforcement at fifty-two inspections with eight warning notices as well as two stop wore quarters. And I, I wanted to point those out, you know, we've transitioned to a different company now for that department and so that staff is up to speed. Richard's done an excellent job bringing it up to speed and along with that transition. Economic development, our small business assistant grant program continues to, to go along very well. The online portal reopened on January twenty-ninth and over thirty applications have been received. Also our Al Frisco matching grant is open with twelve applications have been received for a total value in that area of thirty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The IT, being one of our main background departments, has continued to keep everything operational and also has, um, in the final stage of the police fleet, new laptops for those. And also, as I've mentioned in the past, the desktop to laptop transition is almost complete as well. In communications and marketing, they've launched the Dunwoody Ambassador logo ad, t-shirt, video webpage, social media and the special newsletter. There's some interesting links within that that are embedded in that report as well. So take a look at that along with our normal COVID nineteen updates that are in D-News and also on our hotspot on the website. Finance Department, our risk manager position, I mentioned this last time, but they've now started now that February first has come and gone. So that person is on the job now as part of our new Jacobs contract. And we also have, um, as a reminder to the public, a front desk reception is open Monday and Friday from eight AM till noon, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday from eight AM to five PM. And that office, you know, we have, like all the departments do have back office staff to support city operations. Quite a few employees are working from home, but we do have that support here in the office in a safe environment. Speaking of, of, uh, you know, how we're operating, municipal court disposed of seventy-nine cases over the past two weeks and reset twenty-eight cases. And so that department is still, you know, functioning and able to serve the public even during the pandemic. So that's, uh, that's what I had in the report, I'll send that out to y'all momentarily. We do need an executive session tonight for both legal and real estate. So, um, Mayor, be glad, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you or the council may have.
Does anybody have counts, uh, questions for Eric's report? Okay, seeing none. Council comments, anyone want to raise their hand for council comments? Joe, go ahead.
Just a quick systemic, uh, back to the Mount Vernon, I'm not gonna, because we're still moving forward, but I just want to go back out to the public and kind of let folks know how the process worked internally. So, um, you know, I just knew on council, uh, a little over a year ago, and I think it was prior to joining council that the staff prepares an RFP for scope of services. They send it out to, uh, they post out to public for a consulting to do a concept design. And a staff comes back and when they develop that RFP, they will look at our master plans and what's incorporated in those master plans, that's what they will put down in there, uh, coming forward to that. I would like, now, we've got a retreat coming up, uh, in shortly, uh, that we kind of talk about strategic things and I'm a big process and procedural person. And I would like to talk with my peers about how potentially the council could get involved a little bit before we submit the RFP to make sure that we are kind of, generally speaking, got a good decent guidance. You know, the analogy is, you know, we have a legal process of people that come to do rezoning and a slump and so on. And the council sees that legally officially at the end, after they've had a community meetings, after they've had the planning commission, then they're coming to us. And now then they get to work a lot of things. And as you can see with, with staff presenting that, um, I'm looking forward to potentially having a little more fee, uh, input at the beginning of the cycle so that when we get to this point of seeing something after it's gone through public vetting as well, that it's, you know, we sort of kind of get, get, get a little bit more feedback early on so that we're kind of, we're together because we're paying for that consulting dollars. You know, we paid for that design out, out, out the door. So those are funds that, that we spent. So I just wanted to kind of put that out for everybody and, uh, thank you, thank you, Mayor Deutsch.
John?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that we have new employees in our code enforcement office and they are getting out and meeting members of the community and doing some good work. And I've been seeing a lot of emails back and forth between staff and residents and getting cases cleared up and getting up to speed on cases that have been existence for a while. So Eric, kudos to the staff and please keep up the good work. Code enforcement's a very important job here in the city of Dunwoody and I know they're going to continue to do great things. I just wanted to acknowledge that they're new, they're, you know, give, give them a little time to get up to speed, but they're doing great work, so thank you.
Anybody else? Me. So it is Black History Month and as part of Dunwoody's recognition, we have an art exhibit at the skate park, uh, pieces of art that are on lining the park. You can find out more about them, I believe, on the Parks and Recreation page and also on Facebook. And if they haven't already, they'll start sharing information about each piece from the artist's perspective and it's certainly worth visiting. Additionally, tomorrow, I believe, and you can't yell at the messenger if she is wrong, that Publix will open for first vaccines, still Phase one A at seven AM. Google Publix COVID vaccines and the instructions are there. They say you don't have to get up any earlier than that. And we will, we have a new page on our webpage for information about vaccine as additionally COVID testing. We have a new provider in Dunwoody for testing. Thank you to St. Luke's Church for loaning their space to viral solutions as an additional source for test. With the vaccine, it's great news and with each week we get more and more people vaccinated. But make no mistake, the virus is still prevalent in our community and beyond. And everyone needs to continue to take care. And with that, I need a motion for executive session, please.
Move the exit to executive session for purposes of legal and real estate.
Second? So that was moved by Jim and second by Pam. All in favor signify by raising your hand. That's unanimous, Sharon. And, um, we will return at the end of executive session. Everyone needs to leave this meeting to go to. Do y'all keep your windows open? How do y'all get back so fast?
Just fast fingers.
Yeah, me. Okay. I think we have enough.
Move adjourn.
Second. Any further discussion of agenda moving? Nope, seeing none. Everybody signifies, raise your hand. Meeting is adjourned unanimously, Sharon. Thank you.
Bye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.